Good evening, welcome to the May 22 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Roll call please.
All five selectmen, Town Council and Town Administrator present this evening.
Thank you. All right, we need a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Mrs. Frank, how would you like to do that for us? If you come and visit, we make you work.
[inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, any announcements for you?
No, sir.
Mary?
No, sir.
Senor Peter.
I assume we've got something in there for the Oyster Festival this weekend?
There is nothing in here, but I was going to mention it, but you can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
Thursday through Sunday.
Yeah, they've got, if you go on their Facebook page, Oyster Festival, they've got Oyster Educational Events this week, a couple of them, I believe, I don't remember the specifics. But they also have the festival itself, which is scheduled for this Sunday from 11:00 until 5:00 on Main Street. Main Street will be shut down if you're driving around town during that time, so it'll be a little congestion. It'll be shut down from Center Street to Sawyer Street, so it'll be a little crowded. But the event drew thousands of people last year, it was the biggest one yet. They've apparently doubled the number of vendors this year from about 40 to 80, from what I read. So, sounds like it's going to be one heck of a good time, so. And hopefully we get decent weather. That's all I can think of at the moment.
Okay, a couple things. First off, we need a moment of silence for George LeBank, one of our former electrical inspectors has passed away, and I'd like to have a minute of silence for him, please. Thank you. George was a hot ticket. He's here for a long time, too.
Car guy.
Huh?
Car guy, too.
Yeah, car guy, oh yeah, for sure. All right, secondly, you know, I don't know what it is with people, but they seem to get their news nowadays off of Facebook, which in my opinion is one of the worst things that ever came along in the history of the United States, because half of the stuff is not real, people. I mean, they're posting all over Facebook now that there's needles all over our beach. That's ridiculous. Look, do they find needles here and there around town? Absolutely. And today, and this, the way things are with the opioid crisis, do you have to be a little vigilant and teach your kids not to touch those kinds of things if they ever see one? And by the way, not just on the beach, but just about any place? Yes. But there's no reason not to enjoy the summer, go to the beach, have a good time, and enjoy. The summer's coming, we're going to have some fun. This is the fun time of year, you know, in the middle of the winter, this is what we're all dreaming about, right? So, and it's not just needles, we have a couple of boat accidents that we had already. You know, summer's the time to have a good time, and we all should do that. I mean, you've got to get it out of your system, you've got to have fun, okay? But we also have to be safe and vigilant, so next winter, we can be dreaming about next summer, you know, and having a good time. So I just want people to realize, don't, you know, the news that you're reading on Facebook, folks, I don't know what it is, why people think one person will pick it up and carry it to the next guy, the next guy, the next guy, and all of a sudden I hear, "Oh, did you hear about all the needles all over the beaches in Wareham?" No needles, folks. Once in a while, they find a needle here or there, just like every other town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and probably in the United States of America right now. So I just want everybody to understand, take the news from us, not from them, okay? Thank you. All right, then, we, that's it, that's all I got.
Okay.
All right, so far.
Mr. Sullivan might add on to what I'll talk about right now. Over in Union Ave tomorrow, they'll be doing, I believe, line painting?
Yes.
Still? So basically, at 6:00 in the morning, you'll have to remove your cars from Union Ave. If you have your car parked there, most likely you'll get towed. And Peter's mentioned, the Oyster Festival is also a duck race, which is another event as well, going on the same timeframe. That's all I've got.
Actually, I do have one more thing.
Go ahead.
We're at the point now where Meet Me at the Tremont, the second go-around, the date has been set for August 25th, that's the last Saturday in August. And again, it's going to be from 5:30 to 8:30. There's going to be some different music, there's going to be some different arts, this time, there's going to be actually a potter in there, making pottery. So, it's going to be live art, opposed to hanging art like last year. And the food is going to be catered by the Mingle Boys.
Mini Pearl.
Mingle Boys. So, it was a great time last year, so we hope people will come out again this year.
I look like Mini Pearl. I had a tag hanging off. I get a little note, "There you've got a tag."
[laughing]
It wasn't hanging off my hat, but what the?
Put in the hole of a jacket.
Oh, yeah.
I'm ahead of you.
That was pretty funny.
That's a little decorum.
All right, we're going to move to the appointment of council on aging first.
We've got to do that first.
Oh, citizens' comments, I forgot.
Board comments first. Tony, you have anything outside the normal realm?
No, I'll say.
Mary?
I do not.
Peter?
Not this week.
No.
Okay. No, I think I'll let it go for now.
Okay. Then citizens' comments, anybody here to speak to the board tonight? Nope? All right, so now we'll go to the appointment of council on aging, because this gentleman has to be out of here sort of before dark, so. Yeah? All right, Jack Ducey, you want to come down?
Okay.
And tell us how excited you are?
Come on down.
I'm sure you are.
I am. I got corralled into this thing, but...
Yeah, that's what usually happens, you miss a meeting, something, all of a sudden, you know, you're...
Why are you so excited?
Yeah, I am. I like to help the seniors in town, I'm one of them, so I read the article the other day, that a third of the people that live in Wareham are senior citizens, so they need help.
Well, there's a few of us up here that are seniors.
Mm-hmm. Congratulations.
Thanks.
You made it.
It depends on what age you start at. I think it's 50, actually.
I don't know.
50, ARP eligibility.
Yeah, it's ARP eligibility.
Be what, 55?
Some of us look like seniors before others.
It's a lot between 50 and 55.
Some are more senior than others.
Excuse me?
I'm okay, I know.
Some are both senior right now.
I'm allowed 10 senior moments a day, remember that?
Yeah, you have them all here, that's the problem.
It's okay where I have them.
Hey, you put in your dues, you've got to be a senior, that's a good thing.
Okay, why don't we find out?
I didn't read it on Facebook, because I don't do Facebook.
There you go.
So I must have read it somewhere.
You've got a recommendation.
You've got my recommendation.
Any other questions for the board at all?
No. Thanks for stepping up.
Need a motion?
All right, I move that we appoint Jack Ducey for Tim's Point Road, Wareham, to the council on aging for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, sir, you can pick up your paperwork at the selectman's office tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have an appointment to the Minot Forest Committee, Linda Gay, I know she's not here. I make a motion, we...
Minot Forest, I see, you say?
Says Minot Forest.
Oh. Linda would be community events.
Community events.
I thought Sandy wanted to go back to Minot Forest.
Yeah.
Well, then we'll...
I think it's a mistake, then.
Oh, well, that's a mistake, so we'll put it aside, and we'll do it next week, how about that?
Yeah, mark it up for the office to fix.
We'll just mark it up. We'll just do it next week, it's no big deal. She can put the right paperwork.
What else you got there?
All right, I go, we got other stuff, anyway. Constables, okay. Well, let's do Sandy first.
There should be another...
I have Sandy, um...
There also should be one more, I think.
One more, one more for that board?
Yeah, looks like it's out of place.
I saw, I saw there was two, yeah, that's right, two. Constables, hold on. Constable, constable. No, they didn't put it in here. Constable, constable.
Are the two together or are they all?
Maybe. I don't think so, though. Nope.
Is that what Linda Gay's one by accident?
No, they put Linda Gay in there, but they didn't put the other, because I know there was another one, because they sent us a thing saying they, the board voted to approve them, so. But all this is constables.
Do you have a new agenda?
Agendas don't list, too.
What do you have with the backup on the agenda? Janet will send?
Yeah, see, it doesn't have the names on the agenda, so.
We've got Mrs. Slavin for Minot Forest, we've got Linda Gay for community events on this.
Yeah.
So this is correct.
Yeah. What do we have for...
So we can still go ahead and vote this.
Do you have the name for the council aging?
Uh, hold on.
Agenda.
It's, I got the agenda, but it's not, it just says, what do you call it, it doesn't have names on it.
Um, we've got constable, constable, constable...
It's in the backup.
I'm looking.
Yeah.
It's on my phone. Constable, constable. But we can go ahead and, we've got another constable, more constables. How many constables do we have? Lots of them.
Six or seven.
Okay, we just did Mr. Ducey, so he's all set.
We should have the other one, the one that wants to be.
Um, Mr. Ducey, this was his application, this was... No, now we're down to Class 2. No, why don't we go back, I've got the correct information for Linda Gay for the community events, so if you want, I'll just make that motion.
All right.
Just going to scroll back up and get to it.
We have to do the second one, Sharon, next week. Sorry about that.
So I don't have to read your report?
No.
How long are the terms on community events, three years?
Three.
Three.
Actually, yours probably won't come due until close to June sometime, because it's a renew for the existing.
June 30th, 2021, I think would be it.
We can sign it later, we can just get the appointment done now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Linda Gay, 8 Short Neck Road, PO Box 992 Onset, Mass., as a member of the Community Events Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Tony, any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
So we will have to execute that once it's in the office for us.
Yeah, but just, if you make a note of existing, you change it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this is interesting, Sandy's, Sandy's on the Minot Forest Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve Sandy Slavin, 36 Oak Street, Wareham, Mass., to the Minot Forest Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, any questions for the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, one, 4-0-1.
I'm going to ask council this, now that she's an elected official, does that change anything?
No. Only if you're on the FinCon, or if you're a selectman, then you're restricted to what you can do.
Just those two boards, I knew, I knew, I knew the FinCon and selectman were, but I wasn't sure if it affected everybody.
German day today, huh, kid?
All right, so now I'm just going to go through these constables, and I'm just going to make the names, and we'll go from there.
Appointments.
These are all June 30th, 2019, okay?
Yep.
Robert J. DeLuca for Peter Cooper Drive, Wareham. Richard J. Coletti for Lisa Lane, East Wareham. Thomas A. Zine, 40, Harris Hill Road, East Falmouth. Shelley M. Mobila, 12 Robinwood, Buzzards Bay. Cynthia Foles, 5 Beverly Way, Wareham. Herb W. Vandal Jr., 216 Rockland Street, New Bedford. Karen A. Blair, PO Box 292, Middleborough, Massachusetts. Richard F. White, Box 1664, Sagamore Beach, Massachusetts. I move we appoint them as constables, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, quick question for Town Council. We have, is there a certain number of constables we're supposed to have, there's a minimum, maximum? I mean, the reason I ask is, you know, if you've got like 20 or 30 constables, is there enough money being made by those people for the town of Wareham to make it worth their while? A lot of them.
It's funny that you ask that, because the last week, I had a constable application, and I was looking at that very question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's because the microphone's straight up on the above.
There we go, there we go. Last week, I was looking at that very question, as we were dealing with another constable appointment, and the statute itself doesn't set either a minimum or a maximum. You could make everybody in the world a constable if you found them to be suitable, so I think that there's a sense that at a certain point, you're going to decide that you have enough, or that you need more.
All right, I'm not, not going to get into it, obviously, tonight, because we haven't pre-discussed it, but I think it's just an item that sometime in the next month or so, we just bring up as a discussion item, and see whether we want to cap it or not. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0, thank you.
All right, that takes care of appointments. License hearing at 7:15. We have a hearing approximately 7:15 on the application of Buzzards Way Garage, 3067 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, for a Class 2 license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Tony?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mary?
Here.
Yes.
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 Okay, is he here?
Hello, sir.
Come on down, sit in front of us here, and... Okay, this is for everybody's edification, a nine-car license on where the protein was. Does everybody know where that is, on the corner of Main Ave?
Girl change, yeah, yeah.
Main Ave and Route 6 and 28.
Yes.
Sonic was going to go.
Yeah, Patrick, you have some questions first?
Where Sonic was going to go, yeah. And we have a different drawing now, as well. The drawing shows the turnaround, which is one of them in front of this place. By the way, the surety and everything was here, I did check all that out yesterday.
Everything's in place, except...
Everything was in place and acceptable. I'm trying to find the map, I don't know if you guys got it in your backup or not, but I'm going to give it to you. Because you remember, a big chunk of that land is kind of going away, to the road, the road design. Well, sort of in the front there, where they're going to have one of the spinarounds right there, I guess.
Do you need it, Patrick?
Um, you, no, that's not the right one, there's another one. The one that you have, I think, in your packet is wrong.
If you want to pass this back to us.
Yeah, that's the one.
I've got it here, this is the one that, it's the actual...
Yeah.
This is what the state presented to the...
This is the right one, see, the yellow is the state's taking.
Yep.
That goes back to October of 2017.
Oh.
And what's happened is, the state, I think, has not got back to the property owner for the easement and stuff, but the actual takings have been approved to go ahead.
I actually...
So that's more or less going to be done.
I saw, it is in here, I saw it, yeah, here it is. I know I saw it when I looked at the file.
It came yesterday.
No, it is in here. All right, so I saw we wanted to put five spaces on one side, and four spots sort of up in the front.
Five and four.
Yeah.
Constable.
Yes, I saw that. Now, I'm not sure, this, this is the one that, I believe this is the one that Sonic did, right?
No.
Comes from the Sonic plant?
The other one is the Sonic one that we got, this is, this is from the state.
Oh, this is the state plant?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, so then the spaces are right?
Yeah, except...
What we have here.
But the one from the Sonic, if you look at it, the, see, the Sonic shows it, it's still all the property, that type of thing, and it was up in here somewhere.
Oh, yeah, no, these are fine, these, these four would be fine over here.
I've got the Sonic one.
And these five, I don't have any issue here at all, do you, these five over here and four over here, does anybody, did everybody see where he's putting those? Does anybody have any issue with those? This is four towards the front, and then five along this side.
That's the nine.
Okay, that's the nine, which...
What's going to happen is, you're going to have to take a look at where it is versus what the state has provided here, and you've got to probably move them back a little bit, so where you showed them on the Sonic map?
Yeah.
Is basically farther up into the takings, because the taking's not just the corner that goes around, it actually goes in a ways, and if you look closely, you see the dotted line?
Yeah, I do see it, yeah.
That was the original property line.
Right.
And they were right up against that.
Right.
Now they've got to come back that distance here and over here, too. It's not a big deal.
But anyway, you're not obviously going to put them up towards the state property, but, but that location is fine with me, does anybody have a problem with that location?
No, I just want to, when you actually do the cars, the nine for now, pull them back a little bit from where you planned, so they're closer to the building, and then once everything is done and finished, if you want, you can move it, depending what they do, but I'm not sure exactly how much the state has, because the road itself, on 6 and 20, they have 40 feet on each side of the highway, and it depends where the highway center is, because a lot of times, the highway center isn't the center of the road. So, in this particular case here, it comes more to your side, because the piece, you know, with Ferry's property, he's losing a piece of his corner, too, the same way, actually more.
Ferry loses more.
That's the reason why I contacted the owner of the property, you know, because I was concerned knowing what the change was going to be.
The other, the other thing, the other thing I want to mention to you, and mention to the board, is that, you know, this spot has always had boats on it, landscaping, you know, all that kind of stuff. Hypothetically, when you have a dealer's license, your primary business is supposed to be dealers, selling cars, okay? Repairs, that kind of thing, that's all part of a dealer's license. We can't have, we're going to make a restriction, there can't be any boats for sale, there can't be any landscape materials for sale.
I understand the landscape materials, but I was under the assumption that if it was a registered, whether it be a trailer or a boat or something of that sort, that that would fall under that.
You, you are now a dealer, and what you display here has to be shown on this map.
Uh-huh.
All right, now you have places for people to park?
Right.
And you have places for nine cars to be?
Right.
And you have places for your service cars. That's your spaces, I mean, that's what you're asking for on this license.
Okay.
It's a primary use, so you can't be selling boats and widgets or anything else.
If the boat was in one of those spots, would it be classified as being for sale in that spot?
I guess hypothetically, you could have it as one of the spots, I suppose.
I believe that's...
I don't, I don't think that would be a problem.
I understand what you're saying, you don't want me piling boats and stuff up on the side?
I don't want...
But if it was in one of those nine spots?
I mean, if you, if it, if it was one of your nine vehicles?
Right.
I don't see, would that be a problem, Rich? That shouldn't be a problem, right?
Okay.
No. As long as it's one of your nine vehicles, I don't see where it's a problem.
That's fine, thank you. There's a place in Onset that actually has, that they have eight spaces, and one of them is a boat.
Yeah, I don't really think that's a problem, I don't have a problem with that, you guys don't, but, I mean, as far as, you know, doing landscaping and, you know, all the bricks and the things and all that, that's, that can't happen anymore.
Now, what about, like, construction equipment, in other words, for sale, as long as it's in those spots?
If it's part of your sales stuff, you can put it in the spot.
Right, that's great.
If you, if you want to sell, you know, a machine or something, as long as it's in that spot, you have no issues.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
But that, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
And they're really watching this now, I just want everybody to know, they're really watching this, I noticed that he actually goes in and counts cars.
Oh, that's...
So, just, he's been doing that.
Exactly, so you can have seven cars, a boat, in a backhoe, as long as they're in the spots, it's all good.
You've got no issues, okay?
That's not...
But you can't have nine cars, a boat, in a backhoe, then you're in trouble.
Just trying to cover your butt.
As long, now, what if the, hypothetical, I guess, if, if the backhoe was in for some work to be done on it?
Mm-hmm.
And then...
As long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't have a for sale sign, and it's not for sale there, was, you're not going to have an issue.
Just kind of garage operation, yeah.
That's the service center, and that goes in your service area.
Okay, now, let's say that that...
Just use a little common sense.
Oh, no, I am, but that particular vehicle was going to be for sale, but it wasn't yet, because it had to go in for service.
Right, so you're going to fix it, and then put it up for sale, right?
Correct.
So then you put it in your space.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
It's not for sale until it says for sale.
Exactly. So, all right.
Fine.
Anything?
Motion? Motion to close the hearing, you're all set, you don't have anything to say. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Do we ask if anybody?
Wait.
You've got to ask somebody, even though nobody's here.
Anybody here to speak for the applicant? Anybody here to speak against the applicant? Move we close the public hearing?
There we go.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Here.
Alan, yes.
All right.
So it's closed.
All right.
Any discussion before the board now?
Any, yeah.
Need a motion to go ahead and do the license then?
I move, we approve the application of, let's see, DBA Buzzard's Way, Bay, wait, wait a minute.
It's Buzzard's Way.
Buzzard's Way Garage, but you know what, hold on a second. It's three oh six seven Cranberry Highway LLC, DBA Buzzard's Way Garage. Okay, good.
Yep.
Three oh six seven Cranberry Highway East Wayam, for a Class Two license for nine automobiles, according to the plan, with the, with the restriction that there is no landscape activity, okay, on the property? And if you're, and if you're gonna sell something, it has to be in the spaces and so on. Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy, I have a good, I hope it works out really well.
Good luck.
Thank you, I think it will.
Good.
Send those down to those guys.
Can you guys sign these when you get a minute? All right, now we have a secondhand dealer's license for Burt's Bargain Shop on Main Street. Everything looks okay. I don't see anything as, I make a motion, we approve Burt's secondhand dealer license.
Need a second? Any discussion from the board? I just wanna make one point, it's, we have a restaurant right next door, and there's a tendency for people to kinda hang out in front of Burt's, and it kinda blocks up traffic or whatever.
Okay.
So it has to make sure that he has nothing out in display, on the sidewalk there, etc.
If they're loitering, though, the police should just move them on.
Yeah, but I just wanna make a note of that, that he needs to make sure that it just can't.
Gotta keep them moving along, yeah.
They just can't, if they wanna go inside the store, it's fine, but they can't just, four or five people just sit in front of the store, just hanging out there.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
All right, so, this is an interesting one, what is this discussion and possible recommendation? Write a letter of recommendation to zoning board property owned by Brock Tucci.
This is mine.
Okay.
I spoke to Mr. Tucci a while ago. I think everybody probably has some history going back of the difficulties Brock had with the town of Wareham. Some of it, of course, was his own making, but some of it was the making of, you know, prior elected officials.
Yep.
I remember one point where they were trying to claim that Jellystone, you know, campground park, that the, the septic system, et cetera, was polluting the town wells, except the town wells were north of the campgrounds.
Right.
And uphill.
And I've yet to see water flow uphill.
Yeah.
You haven't seen water go uphill?
No, I haven't seen that yet, even the binding.
Only in, only in Bunsen Superior Court have I heard about water running uphill, but that's a different story.
So, between that and he tried to sell soils, and he didn't really apply for a form exactly, but they never let him actually sell soils, although Cranberry Grove's had. And it, it put a real financial, you know, distress on his business and everything else. And what I wanted to do was write a letter to the ZBA, he's got a piece of property that he wants to sell, that he needs income, obviously. And the property is in a, I think it's M one, M I one, I think it's one thirty, I one thirty. He has a piece of property that's two point six seven acres, next to his existing piece that he has left. It requires three acres, and I'd like to write a letter of support to the ZBA, ask them to give, for the variance, to give him consideration. Mainly because, I, I think he got, I don't know how else to put it, but I think he got a raw deal from the town.
I know he did, because remember they complained about that exit in the back there?
Yeah.
That he had been using for like, you know, fifty years, a hundred years, going out the back.
Right.
That woman in the back was complaining about that exit onto the thing for the trucks for the sand. And, yeah, I mean, he, he definitely, he definitely was given a raw deal, in my opinion.
This guy deserves some reparations. He deserves some reparations from this board after the way he got screwed for years.
I, I agree.
I'll put it bluntly.
I totally agree.
I mean, all I'm gonna do is just, if the board allows me, I'm just gonna write a letter asking the ZBA to take into consideration, which normally they don't. Part of the hardship is the difficulty that they ran into because of what happened.
All right, I move that we allow.
Alan, write the letter.
We allow the, the chairman to write a letter to the zoning board in our, in our opinion, or our, or how he.
Yep, supporting the variance.
Supports the.
Consideration of the variance.
Consideration for Brock Tucci on his property.
Yep.
Second.
Any questions for the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
All right, discussion and vote for release of Kendrick Road, didn't we have this on a, didn't we just put this out on an RFP?
No, this is completely separate.
Different place.
These are the old, when this was owned by, way back when, by the town through, through the then Wareham Redevelopment Authority, there was all sorts of easements and such, they should've gone away when the property was sold. Some of the title companies, now that things are selling in there, are picking those up, so.
Yeah, of course, of course they are.
Yeah, so, to get clean title, we already did this with, basically with the folks from the maltsters.
Yeah, the other ones too.
Yeah, so, so this is if the business certificate had been in for the redevelopment authority, we wouldn't need the Board of Selectmen, but here we are before you.
Thank you.
They've gotten an update on that.
So, we're gonna have to speed read this, I guess.
Want me to do it?
Yep. Peter, speed read that, please.
Okay, certificate of compliance and release, Wareham Community Economic Development Authority, special act authority created under chapter two seventy of the Acts of nineteen seventy seven, and amended by chapter three eighty-three of the Acts of two thousand and four, successor in interest to Wareham Economic Development Industrial Corporation, hereby certifies to Donut Two Realty LLC, Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, and its successors and assigns that as of date hereof, the building located at seventeen Kendrick Road, Wareham, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, more particularly shown as lot twelve B, on a plan of land prepared for omni, nineteen eighty-one trust Kendrick Road, Wareham, Mass, dated February tenth nineteen eighty-nine by Prayman Engineering Company Limited, recorded with the Plymouth deeds as Plan Number One Forty-eight of nineteen eighty-nine and Plan Book Thirty-one, page eleven sixty-seven. Parentheses, the premises, close parentheses, is in compliance with restrictions set forth in the restrictions of protective covenants recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Book Forty-six thirty-six, page two seventy-two. And, two, releases the premises from all restrictions set forth in the following deeds, including without limitation any construction restrictions contained therein and associated rights of reentry. A, deed from Wareham Economic Development Industrial Corporation to Emil, or We Met, trustee of Wheelock Trust, dated April seventeenth nineteen seventy-nine, recorded with said deeds, book six forty-six fifty-three, page three forty-five. B, deed from Wareham Economic Development Industrial Corporation to John Buchanan and Leonard J. Como, dated August twelfth nineteen eighty, recorded with said deeds, book forty-eight sixty-one, page four seventy-one. C, deed from Wareham Economic Development and Industrial Corporation to Maryanna Refining Corporation, dated September eighteenth nineteen eighty, recorded with said deeds, book forty-eight eighty-six, page one ninety-one. D, deed from Wareham Economic Development Industrial Corporation to American Refining Corporation, dated December twenty-second nineteen eighty, recorded with said deeds, book four nine three three, page one thirty-seven. E, deed from Wareham Economic Development Industrial Corporation to John F. Hargreaves and Judith L. Hargreaves, trustees of Design Mark Realty Trust, dated April first nineteen eighty-one, recorded with said deeds, book four nine seventy-two, page two eighty-five. And witness where of the said Wareham Community Economic Development Authority has caused these presents to be signed, acknowledged, and delivered to the name and behalf by, duh, 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 it's duh, 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 here, I'm gonna say by Chairman Alan Slaven, or by Alan Slaven as chairman, hereby duly authorized, which is what our vote is gonna do, this twenty-second day of May twenty eighteen. And that's us, and then after that, it gets notarized, so you're actually gonna have to take this to a notary.
Have to bring it downstairs to Mary Ann tomorrow.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna bother reading the notary clause, that's just standard, but that's what we're voting on, that's the motion.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Patrick, any questions for the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
So you'll have to go and.
Yeah, you'll have to go to Mary Ann.
Yep, do that tomorrow.
All right, next up, we have some signs, some sign things. American Kansas Society Relay for Life, Michael Ponte, remember he was in last week? He filled out the thing, the events at the Wareham Track on six twenty-three eighteen. He's looking to put signs on the main street area, you know, and I think they're gonna get permission for across the street. So, I move that we approve the placing of signs for American Kansas Society Relay for Life.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, any questions for the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
The Wesley United Methodist Church is holding an event, Summer Fair. It's on seven fourteen eight eighteen. They wanna put signs at Main Street, Route Six, Gibbs and Main, Minnet Forest Road, and Great Neck Road. Not next to stop sign.
They have a tendency, see where it says Main Street and Route Six?
Yeah, yeah.
They have a tendency to put it right against the stop sign, which people will kinda look at that and forget the stop.
Yeah, there's, there's a little sign that says not next to it, so, we'll make sure that they know that they can't put it against the sign on Main Street and Route Six, right near the stop sign there. All right, I move we approve this sign request.
Motion by Patrick, second by Mary. Any questions? All in favor?
You have to sign those.
Five zero zero.
All right, let's see, any other business not reasonably anticipated? Tony, Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
Done.
Derek? Alan?
No.
All right, then we move to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you very much, it was already reported, but this is the first meeting that we've had. Happy to announce officially to our Board of Selectmen that we've received Community Compact Cabinet Information Technology Grant in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. It's implement the e-permitting system to track the over twelve thousand permits and licenses, and allow for coordinated review through the departments, which can make the, make it faster for residents and businesses seeking permits within the town. We'd been, we'd applied for this, this is our third time for applying. We'd gone, we'd been seeking other projects before, believe it or not, we were trying to get, get Wi-Fi wireless internet in some of our, some of our parks and areas, because we thought it'd be good for, for businesses and residents, especially the tourism business. However, this, we looked at what's working within the Commonwealth, and this was the one that seemed to be getting funded, so. It's much needed, and we really appreciate the administration, the Baker Polito administration. June one, the parking meters will be turned on, and it'll be full comply, full enforcement, so watch out, folks. You know, just, it's getting about the time where not, not, not so many people can plead ignorance anymore. It's not brand new. The, also as part of it, during the weekends, we will be, they will be using some of the electric vehicles for the enforcement. I think it's a nice usage of them and to maximize ours, we're telling them stay away from EV three.
No, just tell them to plug them in and clean them and so on.
We've gone over the solar pilot agreements from Blue Wave Solar, and we should receive the four of them soon for the, for signatures. That's a, that's a great project, and, and the, the amount of income with really no impact to us service-wise is pretty, pretty amazing. They're also seeking, they've come to volunteer to do some trail cleanup, too. I'm going to request, Mr. Chairman, next week, that we have a short executive session, it's just for a, how do I say this? It's for the acceptance of a settlement.
Six thirty, good.
At six forty-five, this is a, this is a short one, it's workers' count, so. And then on June twenty-sixth at six PM, if we could have an executive session, that's the one we've been, we've been talking about.
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note of that and take care of that.
Well, she'll hear it now and she'll write it down.
Yeah, we originally had it for the, potentially for the nineteenth on hold.
Correct, yes, they were unavailable to attend.
All right.
So, and that's.
That's, that's it.
Well, there's. We need to add to our, how should I put this? We need to add, when we're doing events permitting, they are not allowed to spray paint town property for, for marking things.
You wanna explain, you wanna explain that?
It's, it was not done out of malice.
Doesn't matter.
However, the brand-new paving job done on Union Ave, they were spray painting the mile markers and such for road race on all the, the brand-new blacktop, so. They had spoken. Not chalk paint, and Patrick, you know, brand-new when it's less than twenty-four hours old.
Like permeated, it's, it soaks in there.
And, and the people, actually, they, they had asked whether it would be okay from somebody, I guess, in a paint department somewhere, and that person assured them it would be okay. It, it's not, so. Yeah, it's.
Well, once it dries, it's great.
So, you know, we've got some rain tonight, I, I, I don't know, it's, I, I'm just, again, it wasn't done out of malice, but the, it's brand-new, I know Mr. Menard was driving everybody, trying to get done, he wanted to have it nice for Memorial Day, especially for Onset Center area. We're doing more of the permanent striping on there, we're actually, we're using the epoxy so it can last, and this is just sort of.
They use an unusual color?
No, it's just white.
Oh, well, at least it's.
Oh, this is how we learn, we have a new jogging track in Onset, I guess.
Yes, so, you know, we could, we could make something out of that, perhaps, yeah, but that's. Yeah, it's, maybe it's something we can add to the.
What, beach and tourism sort of stuff that we promote?
Yeah, we've got, you know, so you can run and stuff, you know how far you've gone.
Yeah, but it's.
Don't have to look at your fitness, we've conveniently marked this out for you.
I will tell you, I did not run it to find those markers, I drove to find them, so, we noticed that.
You can name it like the paint that won't go away, five K.
So maybe we can make something nice out of this.
Turn it, turn it, you know.
Feel better now?
Put some lipstick on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so next is liaison reports.
Tony? Mary?
I have nothing.
Yes.
Yeah, there is one thing we, we didn't do during announcements, on Memorial Day, the Veterans Council is gonna do their usual tour of town, going to the cemeteries and the monuments to honor the veterans. There'll be details coming up in Wareham Week on Wednesday, so when you get your new edition of Wareham Week, I think they're taking out of, there's a quarter-page ad announcement in there or something, they'll list where the stops are and what the itinerary is, so that's coming up.
That'll be Monday, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, Memorial Day. Let's see, what else did I liaison? It was something, I can't remember, I'll come back to it.
Affordable Housing Trust?
Well, yeah. Interestingly enough, with the Affordable Housing Trust, nobody's actually come forward with an application for the funds that are sitting in the bank for, I don't know, three, four, five, six years, the last money that was spent was actually the hundred thousand for the Latham Centers, places going on. Great Neck Road, but other than that, there's been zero activity there, we discussed possibly disbanding it, but there's apparently some state grant program that would require us to have it, so going forward, we're going to meet, quote, "as necessary," unquote. We won't be meeting every month. What else?
Redevelopment.
Yeah, we had a redevelopment authority meeting today. The town clerk sent in the required paperwork to establish redevelopment authority as a corporate entity on March second or third. It still hadn't come through, so I actually called up the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Corporation's divisions today, and they can't find it, they haven't seen it, they don't know what happened to it, they even checked their reject pile, and it wasn't in there. So, the clerk is going to send up the proper certification and everything else, once again, but this time by certified mail. Because usually that stuff comes in one day and it's literally online, and, you know, you're, you're incorporated like within a day of them receiving this stuff.
They do a pretty fast job.
They're extremely efficient there, so, and, you know, I started wondering last week what might've happened, so I decided today to call. We had a redevelopment authority meeting today, we're gonna be going forward with sort of the necessary precursor steps for a redevelopment plan to come before this board. We've got slum and blight study updates and a whole bunch of other information, so, I guess that's it.
I don't really have much, I, the sewer people are meeting on Thursday night, and they're gonna be talking about the EDUs, and I can hardly wait for that, so.
Oh, you missed your favorite number.
Yeah, my favorite thing, so I can hardly wait to see what's going on there, because I don't think that thing is moving along fast enough to get to the water rates, in my opinion.
Three years?
Yeah, it's been way too long, it should, by now, they should have worked it out, I mean, we've already talked to Onset, everybody's been talked to, everybody, it just needs to get finished up, and it's just not getting finished up, so. I'm gonna be going to the meeting Thursday night, and I'm sure we'll be having some words about it.
First piece for me is the Bike Path Committee, I went to their meeting last week, nobody showed up except the chair. They're down to about two members, the problem is that either the Friends Group or other people that are interested in the Bike Path need to step up and join that committee, because they have to have a quorum to even meet. The state has approved a little five million dollars for a piece that will be done in twenty twenty-three, which is Narrows Road, Minnet Ave. Another piece came up, the state called me last week, wanted to know if we would allow resident town who has property, which abuts some rural land, which has abandoned rural tracks on it, if they would sell them, the gentleman on the property, would we have any problem with it? And I spoke to the gentleman on the property and asked him if he would give us an easement for what we call a rail trail, and the answer was yes. So now we have this piece that could be available to take the traffic that was proposed for County Road and move it off the road completely. So I'm gonna contact the next property owner that owns the piece that goes from there all the way down to the intersection of County Road, where they were hoping to do it originally four years ago. So again, anybody that's interested in the Bike Path Committee, they need help, they need people in there in order for them to vote and do things, or else the thing could be lost. Also, we went into Boston about a, a little over a week ago, to the Department of Transportation. I went up with the owners of the Robinsons GMC and Robinsons Auto Use Parts. They wanted to put a large digital sign that basically is on their property that faces Route twenty-five, we talked about, which would give the town access to putting up messages, et cetera.
They may have the hearing already?
Yeah, I went up last, about a week ago for the hearing.
Yeah.
So I appeared with them, and, kind of amazing, time-wise, they got the notice, actually, Friday, that they approved it, the state never works that quickly, so that sign, Mr. Sullivan knows is approved, and we'll have to work out the details for our part of that. So that came out also. Mass Municipal Association, Wednesday of last week, we had the, we call the Mass Selectmen's Association. Couple things happened there, there's a meeting that's available for new select persons, make everybody happy, for June ninth. It's a NADAC, I think I left information for Mary, you got it there. We also, I brought the chairman of, of the Board of Selectmen for Born with me to the meeting, and the meeting was on marijuana and the Cannabis Control Commission. So it, he was very happy, George, to bring, to go up there and had a better understanding where they are with everything else. Again, the idea was to build a relationship between the adjoining communities as well, so, that's it.
Did you get them to make sure they're not going to sell it?
They haven't really finalized what they're doing yet, they're not doing medical, but they were talking about retail, but they voted no originally, so I don't think, it's still a little confusing, but they have the answers now.
Okay.
This is what happens.
The medical.
Oh, also, I'm sorry, just so people know, Jimmy Partler, who used to be a selectman of Town of Wareham, won the election in Born, and is now a newborn selectman. And another person, our, basically our electrical inspector, Jerry Parker, his brother, Randy, was elected a selectman in Marion. So we have.
They're stretching out, aren't they?
We're putting feelers out everywhere. Now I'm done.
Tentacles or feelers?
Same thing.
What the hell was I gonna say? I forgot what I was gonna say, how do you like that?
Mr. Opia's meeting.
What? Yeah, I know that.
I couldn't make it, and you couldn't either.
Oh, oh, that's the other thing, is the, the medical marijuana facility is gonna open on Thursday.
Yep.
So, which is, which is good, they're gonna get going, I mean, I, I know everybody doesn't understand, and some people say it's a gateway drug and all this, but the numbers don't prove it, in fact, the numbers show that when they're able to get marijuana, and marijuana's available through medical or one way or the other, that it keeps the opioid crisis down, not up. I mean, that's just the facts, you know, I know everybody thinks gateway drug, well, I hate to tell you, but the facts are the facts. It does, for some reason or another, cut down on the amount of problems with opioid drugs. And, you know, that's a huge problem, as everybody knows, so, that's a good, a good thing.
That grand opening is four o'clock to, I think, seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Down at Bessie Park, they'll have events, they're doing fundraisers for the, for the community and such, so.
There's also, Patrick, a Baypoint, the new project for the, for the building stuff.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah.
I believe theirs starts at four PM, so you can do both if you wanted to, there'd be a grand opening presentation, I think, with the real estate companies at four o'clock.
They're three to six, they're also doing community events and such, they'll have a fifty-fifty raffle with the putting contest to be eligible for the, the fifty-fifty, so. I know I will not be eligible, cause I can't putt worth anything, so.
You know that.
All right.
Next.
Next up is some minutes, and we were all here for these, so I'm just gonna do them all at once, okay? I vote we approve the minutes of May fifteenth, May first, and April seventeenth, and we were all here.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, any questions for the board? Let's make a quick thing, that the office is really up to speed and everything. thing, that the office is really up to speed and everything else. The minutes are coming down quickly.
They're coming down fast.
Because that was one of the comments the auditors made, so we took care of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five zero zero.
I don't know about this one. Rich, you're going to get paid?
You sent us the bill.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
His wife sent us the bill.
That is amazing.